Let's see who's on there. He might be. It did sound like Tyler.
I'm on. This is Tyler.
Is this Tyler McElhenney or Tyler Clot? There's Dick. Oh, that's McElhenney. Okay, so there's Dick. Okay. Hey, Dick, can you hear me? That should, I think that's it. I didn't know, I didn't know Tyler McElhenney was zooming.
There we go.
Just about ready, Brenda?
Sure. I'll just say that when we approve the agenda, if we can move up ten and eleven before the monthly reports.
Hey, Dick, great. You're on the agenda after the monthly reports, but we're gonna screw you up.
No, you're
After the bid opening.
Well, it's just turned nine, so we're still.
A bridge project and then for the, to get to, so you don't have to hang out too, too long, so.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, you're set. Okay, it's nine o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting of the Cottington County Commissioners to order on the fourteenth of October. If you'd please rise, I'll have Commissioner Johnson lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, yeah. Number two is a call for public comment. If anyone has, uh, would like to, to comment in person, or they can do it via the telephone number six oh five eight eight two six two four eight or six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven. And if you have a cellphone, we'd appreciate if you'd silence it. And if you need to take a call, you could step in the hallway and do that. Thank you. Item three, is there any conflict of interest?
No.
Nope.
Okay, item four is, uh, we need a motion to approve the agenda, but we would like to move items ten and eleven after number six before the monthly reports.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Yes? Oh, also added?
And I'll, that's part of the motion, I'll prove that too.
Okay, is there any other?
Oh, second.
Second, okay, there's been a motion and seconded, uh, to approve the agenda. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, number five, we need a motion to approve the October seventh, uh, minute, motion by Johnson.
Second.
Second by McElhenney. Um, is there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, uh, let's move down to number six, opening a bids for the bridge repair project, uh, fifteen dash two forty dash one fifty five. So Randy and Mark, if you come up.
I can get a chance to my school here.
Oh.
Doing by his own, you know.
Oh, okay, yep.
Morning, good morning.
As Commissioner Schwer stated, this is bid opening for bridge repair projects for fifteen dash two four zero dash one five five. This is on our county road seven dash four uh, for some damage that was done to the east side of the bridge a couple of years ago. We do have six vendors that put in bids. The first one is from Tyzak Concrete LLC.
Stella?
T I dash Z A C K Concrete LLC. And they're out of La Center, Minnesota. From Triz, or excuse me, Tyzak, their bid is for two hundred and fifty six thousand one hundred and thirty two dollars and thirty six cents.
They have a bid bond in there. Yes, they do have a bid bond.
The second bid is from Knowles Dragline and Construction, Inc. Knowles is spelled N O L Z. Dragline and Construction, Inc. And they're out of Hartford, South Dakota. Their bid is for one hundred and forty six thousand three hundred and fifty two dollars and seventy five cents. And they do have a bid bond. The next bid is from Letola Builders, Inc., spelled L E H T O L A Builders, Inc. They're out of Lake Norton, South Dakota. Their bid is for one hundred and five thousand six hundred and fifty seven dollars and ten cents. They do have a bid bond.
What did you spell their name again?
Letola is L E H T O L A. Next bid is from BX Civil and Construction, just BX CC for abbreviation, out of Del Rapids, South Dakota.
What would you say when you set it out though with a CC?
BX Civil and Construction.
Would you say it was Del Rapids?
Correct. Yes. Their bid is for one hundred and four thousand two hundred and twenty seven dollars and fifty cents. And they do have a bid bond.
He will have a bid bond.
We're going in the right direction.
He's flat.
The next one is from Holloway Construction out of Parker, South Dakota.
Two thousand? H O L A?
Yes, H O L L A W A Y Bridge and Culvert out of Parker, South Dakota. Their bid is for one hundred and two thousand seven hundred and twenty nine dollars, zero cents. And they do have a bid bond.
Yeah, I'm gonna stay up for no.
That would be nice. We're getting in the right direction.
Okay.
Last bid is from Pram Construction, Inc. Pram is P R A H M Construction, Inc. out of Slaton, Minnesota. Their bid is for ninety two thousand eight hundred and thirty nine dollars and seventy cents. And they do have a bid bond. So that is total of our six bids. Mark would like some time to tabulate everything, so we'd like to meet next week to go over this.
To make sure that they've got everything
Correct.
Listed that they need to do and
Yes, and the, and the DOT needs to, uh, approve the bid too, so.
Naturally.
Yep.
And just for your information, I will not be here. I have a conference next week, so Mark said he will be here. Yep.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Encouraging to have a lot of bids. That's, that's good.
And I don't know if that was intended or not, but they came out exactly in that direction.
Yeah. Number six, they'd be paying us to do it.
Okay, uh, let's move down to, uh, number ten. Discussion possible action to authorize Chair to sign construction directive regarding the hydrant valves for the jail construction project.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Dick, do you want to explain, um, our conversation about this? And if you can explain how this, what, what you're suggesting. So this is, this is a suggestion from Tegra as, as you know, our owner's rep and helping us with the jail project.
Sure. I'm Dick Strasser with Tegra. So on, on a typical project, there are occasions where there's something that, things that come up that will need immediate action. This is an example of this. Uh, this is one where the city is requiring, uh, some additional valves. And, um, it, it was discovered, you know, as they're doing it, um, we're in that process. And so I called Lee and I said, we need an immediate action on this. We need to, need to approve this. Now, in this case, which is unusual, we don't know the cost on it yet because it hasn't, um, to keep construction going, we need to do it. And, um, then we, you know, negotiate the price after the fact, which that's a, that's a construction change directive, which is unusual. The only time we do that is when there's something that will hold up the project. Now, in this case, we know that it's, you know, let's just say it's under ten thousand dollars, probably even significantly less, um, but we need an immediate action. And that brings up a, a bigger issue on the project, and that is, on these projects, we typically have somebody who's authorized to make decisions like that along with ones that are more routine. Every week or two, there's, you know, some things that will come up. Sometimes there's nothing, and other times there might be a half a dozen that come up, uh, that are small changes that would not change the guaranteed maximum price, but would, uh, would shift the, the dollars from the construction contingency into a line item. And then there's others that would change the guaranteed maximum price that are actually an owner cost, uh, but would not exceed the project budget. So on, on the counties we're working with right now of, of Lincoln County, Parker, Clay, Minnehaha, uh, those counties have all passed, uh, resolutions that allowing somebody to make those calls up to a certain dollar amount. Now, I, I think on all those I just mentioned, it was a hundred thousand dollars. So the designated person can make decisions up to a hundred thousand dollars. Now, having said that, it is you know, typical, if there's something that's significant, it's brought to the commission, even if it's under a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, so our recommendation is to authorize that so Lee could make these type of decisions. And then would bring, you know, bring to the, the issues that are larger, bring that to the commission. And otherwise, what happens is, like in this particular case here, we've got this valve. If we wait till a, a commission meeting, if the, the meeting doesn't, you know, kind of fall on the right day and the right timing, to get it on the agenda and so on, we could lose time on the project, which will cost the project money. So there's kind of three issues. One is ones that have to happen where we don't know the cost, which is pretty unusual. This is the first one that's come up now, I'd say in the next last couple of years. Usually, we know about it ahead of time and you know, we have time to evaluate it. We know what the cost is, but every so often, there's something like this that comes up. Second would be changing the dollars, moving it from, uh, construction contingency into a line item. Uh, that's something that, uh, that, that we put in the contract that the owner has to approve that. And Tegra would oversee it to make sure it's a fair dollar amount before we'd recommend approval on it. And the third is kind of the routine thing, if there's little changes here and there, uh, that, um, that are drawn from the owner contingency. So our recommendation is to, uh, authorize uh, someone seemingly Lee to have that authority. And then he would need to bring things back. If it's a bigger dollar amount, he'd need to bring it back to the full commission.
So, um, so Dick, for the, uh, Mr. Chair, you might
Yep.
So, uh, for the first one, number ten on our agenda, which is that, that's the, uh, hydrant valve, but you may not be able to I think I might have forgot to email you the agenda. So, um, do we need, is that just something we can approve as a board? We have, we have written in the agenda to authorize the chair to sign. Do we just need to approve it for now? And then, um, do we, is there a document that, that somebody would sign on that one?
There will be, yeah.
Okay.
Motion approved.
A motion by Johnson.
I'll, I'll second that.
Second by Gable. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And, and then, uh, Mr. Chair, number, number eleven, that's the one that, the broader one, Dick, that, um, the way, the way we have it written is, and it's a little long here, so I'll read it. Discussion possible action to authorize the commissioner liaison. So that's currently me, um, for the jail and the, and the sheriff's office. Um, to provisionally approve future design and construction changes and to make other decisions concerning new jail construction when not practical to wait until the next scheduled Board of Commissioners meeting to prevent construction work interruptions. With the understanding that the commissioner liaison will keep the Board of Commissioners abreast of these matters. Um, you could also insert, we were talking before the meeting a little bit about this, that maybe in the, if you can't get ahold of the commissioner liaison, me, we could alternatively, um, have the chair um, as the alternate just to get ahold of, to make those decisions. So we could insert that if that's, does that sound okay?
You know, it does. The only friendly amendment I'd make to it is, um, you've got it that it's, um, to make decisions that are, um, how did you word that? Um, uh, what's not practical for the next scheduled, uh, Board of Commission meeting. There are, there, there will be a lot of little items. They might be hundreds of dollars um, that aren't necessarily, you know, a schedule item. But, uh, for example, on Clay County, we're on number eighty six right now as the project's concluding. Um, and the question is, do all the commissioners want to see all the little ones, or do you want to see, you have a, have a larger approval where you bring it when it's a certain dollar amount?
I guess there's some, maybe there's a little bit of subjectivity in the, in the last phrase about, um, that the commissioner, with the understanding that the commissioner liaison will keep the board, the Board of Commissioners, uh, abreast of these matters. Um, I mean, that's kind of general updates. I see that as kind of general updates in sufficient detail. Um, as the, uh, as a project progresses. So I don't know, does that, that's kind of what I, I was thinking. So with that one.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Uh, I'll move that we comply with this request that we do. I don't know if we appoint the layman, which is, uh, Commissioner Gable um, as the person that can make these, uh, decisions, but also to include in that motion that the backup would be the chair of the board. And, uh, in this case.
Troy.
It would be
And so I can make sure that, that Dick has that, um, that point, I'll make sure you have Troy's contact information.
Yeah.
So
and, and do we need to cook the, uh, dollar amount limit on it, the hundred thousand?
Is that what you would recommend?
We'd, we'd recommend that, yeah.
And, and I'll make that part of my motion then as well.
I have one question. So it's probably better just to leave it board chair because we'll be doing these projects next year, so we don't have to come back and tweak this and maybe put commissioner liaison to the jail rather than specifically naming names because we don't ever know.
Sure, I can insert that too. Okay, so commissioner liaison to the jail.
And that's, that's part of my
Yeah.
That's, that's what I meant to say.
Right. Um, the other thing right, right. The other thing he mentioned is about a resolution, so we don't have that this week. We can put that on for next week, but we can still approve you doing this. But our resolution, we can approve next week, but I would need an example of something like that.
That's a good point. So, yeah, so this is not in the, this is just in the, we'd be just in the minutes, Dick, so we, we
Yeah.
Uh, Brenda brought up a good point.
Then you'll get it worded, right? So in resolution, yeah.
We'll format it in a resolution probably. Okay.
And I'm all right with that.
So we'll just wait till next week to, uh,
Well, we can, well, should we do, should we go and do this now in case something comes up and then?
Oh, then just have a pass resolution next week. Oh, okay.
Basically, same thing, but
Well, we have a motion by Johnson. We need a second. Second by Gable. Any further discussion?
And I thought, when I first read this, I thought right away that, uh, my concern was that's nothing a lot of, a big load on Lee and Lee handles the front end and he might not be available. And I thought, you know, we should have a backup. You never know what's gonna happen. And so that's why I, uh, and I just casually, I asked if he thought that that was a good idea and he agreed. So that's how that all come about.
Yeah, true. And then they, so, and then we'll insert the, the amount there too, so, so.
Yeah.
Oh, all right. Any further questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
I think that's it. So that's ten.
Thank you. That's ten and eleven. Yep.
Yep.
Okay, let's, uh, um, move to, uh, number seven, uh, monthly reports. We'll have our auditor, Brenda Hanton.
All right, good morning. Uh, the twenty twenty six liquor license renewals that have been mailed out, and they will be on agenda for your approval on Tuesday, November fourth. The, and, um, levy work is continuing for taxes paid twenty twenty six. Also, they are implementing the new voting system, vote SD, so we are in the process of attending virtual meetings and, um, learning all of those new processes as well.
So what is, what, what is vote SD? Do I see their booth at the, at the commissioner, county commissioner conventions, but what is exactly?
It's the same as our total, it's, it's like total vote. It's going to be on Secretary of State's website, you know, everything that you can get from that. And how we register people, that's what it, this vote SD is. It's, it's, it's the same but different. It's upgraded. It's a lot different.
Does the same thing, but
Yes.
But better.
But it's a lot different. It's so far to navigate it seems a little, like there's a lot more steps to do things.
But basically oriented on voter rolls, keeping track of registered voters.
Yes, and that's where I create the ballots, like everything is in that.
Okay.
Everything is in that. So, yeah, there's a lot of learning right now that has to happen before January. So anyway, yeah, that is, we're in the process of it.
Okay, uh, thank you, Brenda. Um, we'll move down to the Director of Equalization, Shawna.
Morning. Well, we are coming up on our November first deadline. Um, basically, our assessment information is dependent on that November first deadline, so whatever is done on your property as of November first, that's kind of our cutoff date. We're currently taking applications for the flooded farmland, um, and continuing tax exempt. The appraisers, um, are going to finish up the additions they're in at the lake. We are not going to be able to finish Lake Invesco reappraisal this year. We will be putting out a PSA as well as sending, um, letters to each individual property owners just explaining how the appraisal, you know, when we're out there this summer, the values won't be put on this year. And it, you know, won't affect their taxes due and payable until and, um, kind of explain that we'll be out just, you know, spot checking things next year and then finishing up. I think we have a little over two hundred properties left out there. Um, to do that, and then everything will, of course, then now their taxes won't be affected till like two thousand twenty eight. Cause we do our assessments. This year it'd been twenty six, due payable twenty seven. Next year, anything that gets put on is twenty seven, due payable in twenty eight. So we'll try and explain that, you know, the best we can. Um, but then we'll finish that next year and then maybe start doing around the lake area too. Um, but right now they'll finish up the additions that they're in, and then we'll start doing building permits. Um, we have quite a few of those this year as well. And then we'll just kind of go from there.
So I, I just got a question. Since you're not all done, will they all be the ones that are done, will their taxes be?
No, we will not be preaching yet. We'll wait to put all of them on until
At the same time?
Yep, until they're completely done. Yep. So then we'll just kind of spot check, make sure nothing is, you know, done on these other properties that we already been to and then just put everybody on at the same time.
Oh, okay. Now that sounds good.
Yep.
And I think the general public needs to understand, because I've had a couple of phone calls about their taxes have gone up because of the jail. And I, if I try to nicely explain that that's not gonna show up for a couple of years, so stand by.
Um, we have been explaining, the appraisers do a pretty good job explaining, you know, what's gonna take place. They explain this year to all the houses they went to, that the increase for the jail will be on their twenty twenty six tax bills, correct?
Yep, yes, yes.
So they, anything on the increase for the twenty twenty six will be based off increased assessments in the jail. And then twenty twenty seven, when this comes on, it would only be from the appraisal. But, you know, we, when we go out to houses and explain the taxes, they have been telling everybody at the lake, they'll probably tell all of the building permit um, that they go to, that the tax increase this coming payable twenty twenty six will be partially because of the jail.
Well, going forward, every year up till twenty years, that will be on there.
Yes, but there's still going to be an increase based on the assessments increasing
That too, yes.
Because like anything payable twenty twenty six is based off any increases we made last year.
Right.
So
Yes.
I mean, there still could be increases at the lake just because of that, or additions, you know, any building permits, things like that. So any increases in the taxes isn't essentially just going to be the jail. It's also going to be assessment increases, building permits, things like that. It'll be all of it.
Any other questions for Shawna?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for explaining that. Okay, uh, we'll move down to the Community Service Director, Sarah.
Morning.
Morning. Hi, um, okay. You have your, um, the debt, the graph in front of you or the charts in front of you, um, so Saw forty eight different individuals last month, seventy, seventy six different services. And then for a total of eighty two client contacts, um pretty, that's pretty average for what we've been, not the highest, but um. Still busy. Um, nothing else that's major, South Dakota Cares did end in September, so those hours will be done. Um for time spent on services. Um had another funeral, but nothing, nothing too major there. Any questions on any of those numbers? Okay, oh, um so for cares and E R A, again, it was the last month that Carrie was able to submit. It was one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars in administrative fees that was reimbursed for September. For the Medicaid reimbursement for our C H Ws, we were reimbursed one thousand four hundred and sixty eight dollars for September. And for the new Department of Health C H W grant that we have, we were reimbursed seven hundred and eight dollars and sixty eight cents, so that's the. Money that has been brought into the office. Part of that C H W grant is she's doing, Paige has been going out to do some community awareness presentations on naloxone and opioid use. In the community as well. As far as our office in general, we, the COSUP grant evaluators were here October second and they led a meeting with the Substance Use Steering Committee. That was a well received meeting with some great discussion, we currently are surveying the attendees and coming up with our next um. Where we're, how we're moving forward with that. Also, um I'm working on setting up an opioid funds advisory group, I talked to Carrie Johnston last week and we had a good conversation about um. That the opioid funds and so we're going to be reaching out to some people about working together to advise. Uh how those funds are used and what we're doing with that, so. Yeah, so so the way you can, you explain this, um that's a, that's a really good idea.
Um so Carrie was here last week, as you know, and so she asked for some, some of that funds, which seems like a worthy cause, worthy use of that money and then. Um also, there's some discussion about some of the uh, within the jail construction, there are, there are actually devices that can also help with this. Um that we might want to incorporate and use some of that money um in the jail construction, so the sheriff's been talking um to me a little bit about that. Um it also seems like another good, good use of that money, good um, you know, reasonable use of that money. Um so basically, it's it's equipment that would monitor, you know, the vital signs of somebody that that might be overdose, so it could, you know, could be life or death um situation. Um and then you, I I forgot about this part that you can also apply to the state for funds too, so. So that could also, um so it makes sense to have a community discussion about it, even if, even if, even if those two things might use up most of the money that. That's allocated directly directly to the county, so.
Yeah, yes, exactly, and we also plan to include um of reaching out to the city, I had mentioned it to some of them. Um but because the way the opioid funds work, so the city has a a a fun, a pot that has come through. They receive seventy percent and then thirty percent gets dispersed to the county in this, or the state, sorry, the state. Gets seventy percent and the county and cities get the other thirty percent across the state. What we learned when we were out um at our COSUP. Um conferences and things, most or a lot of communities have this kind of advisory group that. Helps guide where those funds are spent, so make sure that they're used appropriately, so that would be a conversation with the auditor. Um city and then if we can put a comprehensive plan together so that we can see where the state decides to spend those funds and what they do. But when they do that, we're ready as a community to appeal for those, so that's the purpose behind that. Yeah, yeah. The other thing that um I'm working on is a broader community marketing campaign. I've reached out to um several stakeholders to really address our community awareness and attitudes and support of. Um having how we perceive substance use and just um build a better sense of community. So we'll be working on setting up that meeting as well. For the Cottington connects piece, we had an interagency meeting last week, Prairie Lakes and Sanford were the presenters talking about healthcare. Um services in our community, agency of the month this month is the Sheriff's Office and Travis Scutsmur is the individual of the month. The uh school resource officer through the Sheriff's Department. For housing, we did have a meeting last week, it was well attended um and well received. We had presenters from Aberdeen and Mitchell talk about some service, some programs that they have there. And then our city manager and mayor laid out some plans for what we're going to do for housing moving forward. Childcare, we received a report from our consultant, we're looking at what our needs currently are with childcare and so we um evaluating some of those pieces. And then for our centralized location, um we're still working on that um. Trying to determine numbers and some feasibility and and pieces with that, so uh more will be coming on that soon. And as always, check out Cottington connects at Cottingtonconnects dot com for more events and information. Any other questions?
Thank you, Sarah. Um we'll move to number eight, uh discussion possible action to approve estimate to fix water main and detention center. Steve?
Good morning. Yeah, um I was approached and somebody had here about a week or so ago, and so we had about a water main leak um. That has been in the detention center, this leak has been um for a little while and so we had, um but. The it hasn't been really causing an issue, but right now the the ball valve in there cannot be able to shut off anymore. It is solidly stuck, so in the result and so we had when this uh ball valve and black hole um preventer. And the pipe fittings need to be repaired and so we had, um this item here, um uh Matt had said there is enough in the. Um repair budget to to fix this item in the detention center. And the amount is estimated at four thousand seven hundred and twenty four dollars and fifty cents.
Would you approve?
Motion by McElany, second by Gable, um any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, uh let's move down to number nine. Discussion possible action to approve estimate to uh spray foam cattle washing washing rack at the egg.
Um out at the extension building, the wash bay and so we had where they washed the cattle and so we had, um all it is is just wood in there. Um I had budgeted to to uh spray foam this um item plus. Um I will probably come back and so I had, I plan on putting dairy board in there to help keep it cleaner and whiter in there and so we had for later. But the proposal, which I had a hard time reaching out for somebody to go and give me a quote for it, but I did get a quote from a gentleman. Um out of Redfield, um and he put in there for two, two inch, and so that for two thousand eight hundred and. And eighty three dollars. So that, so.
Now would that just be on surface?
Nope, yeah, that's on the surface of the wall and the ceiling. Yep, and the ceiling, yep. Fully enclose this thing.
Motion by McElany, second by Johnson, any further discussion?
You said this, you budgeted.
Yeah, I budgeted for this item.
Not when you put the dairy board, when you put that over.
Yep, that will be, the, yeah, the foam will be stuck along the wall and then on the outside will be a, we'll put a dairy board out there. Which will make it a lot easier, brighter in there, so yeah, so, yeah, and keys here to clean. Um I can comment, so I had, I do know that the egg committee it was looking at help reimbursing on this item too. And so that, so uh we did have it in, we did, we did have a comment on that, um. I did have a little bit of um to hold off a little bit because the four age leaders had looked at doing something. So that they went on to turn around and do a little more than what is anticipated, but uh I needed to go forward and getting this thing project done. If not, so.
Yeah, yes. Any other questions for Steve? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Don't know when you want to put the amendment for the doing equal right now or?
Yeah, let's, let's, I guess, yeah, that's not on there, let's do that right away, Steve.
Um this here is part of the project, this is um, but last May and so we had, we had an inspection for the uh um. Warranty work that was done and one of the suggestions was we had a frost heaving in front of the cell ring doors. And I suggested to put a stoop down in front, so it will not turn around and get a lift of a frost lift in front of those doors. And said that I would go ahead and and do that addition this year and so we had for that. Um we had been waiting for quite a while to get a quote in a bid, we've gotten one and it was way too outrageous, um they did come back and so that. Whalen apologizes, he had received this last week, did not notice it until yesterday. And so that, but they are planning on working on this project, they already tore out the cement and working on this project this week. To get some of this wrapped up, so apologies are are made that this did not get put out last week. So we had for put on the regular agenda, that's why I said I try to amend this, put it on amended.
Fifty one forty four, part of the, the uh.
This here is just basically for the stoop area and replacing some of that bad area. It's not all the warranty work, they are gonna do some of the warranty work and so that, we have been going discussion on the warranty work. Doing a couple changes, instead of milling out some of it, they're gonna probably take out some asphalt and replace it with concrete. Cause the slope is so flat that the concrete would probably be better than trying to lay back, milling back into there. But I'll come back with that next week, so.
I don't know, many of you and all of you understand that Steve is driving that, but for fifty years, we've had trouble with that. He right there.
Yep.
And we've had people actually trip and fall and get hurt and uh we, I'm amazed we didn't get sued a couple of times.
Correct.
Uh so it's, it's a needed for safety.
Yep.
So move.
Motion by Johnson. Second by Gable, uh any further discussion?
Yes, yeah, I have, well, I have budgeted for a lot of repairs, especially for the back parking lot, I had plenty budgeted for that, so.
Thank you, Steve.
Any, no further.
And since the sign is gendered, we need to say it's an urgent matter.
Yeah, emergency, yeah. Okay, seeing no other comments or questions, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're uh.
Number twelve.
Down to number twelve, uh action to redo employee health insurance coverage with Sanford Health Plan. Maybe you guys, gals want to come up.
So I don't know if Natalie wants to, I can let you know, he, as Ray already. Um, we have already mentioned, but I will do it again, the proposed renewal increase for this year was thirteen point seven percent. Um so it's just a matter of you want to stay with Sanford. We just first need that motion to uh continue with Sanford Health Insurance.
So first motion is to continue with Sanford.
Yes.
Yes, that's what we need a motion for. Okay, motion by Gable.
I'll second it.
Second by Johnson. Any other questions?
That's not a question, but it's a comment, it'd be kind of late in the day to.
Yeah.
Fail out another series, so.
Right.
Uh I mean, kind of up against the walls, get it done.
Well, they've been generous, you know, last year it should have been a lot higher and and they didn't, so they're trying to keep the increases down for us. It's it's definitely from all of our um. Health issues.
Our loss ratio was really high, um this year unfortunately, over two hundred percent. From what we hear from employees, they like the plan overall, I think the coverage seems to be good.
Yeah.
Um so that's the, I guess, reason at this point we're going to stay with it too. And insurance is expensive everywhere, unfortunately.
Uh all those in favor of this, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, uh number thirteen is action to determine health insurance premium. Employee employer payment split in the H S A account manager and manager fee.
So first, I probably will go through and just say what the new rates are, because we'll have that and then we can do the splits, does that sound okay?
Yep.
Okay, so for the H S A. Um option one, the current rate for a single is seven thirty four ninety two. The new proposed rate is eight thirty five seventy three, now this is not what the splits will be. But this is just what the new rates are, yeah, these are just the premium rates. So for the family in the H S A, the current monthly rate is one thousand eight thirty seven thirty one. And that is going to two thousand eighty nine thirty three. Then we have option two, and that is the thousand dollar deductible. The current rate for a single is a thousand thirty three ten and that amount is going to one thousand one seventy four eighty one. And the family rate for the thousand dollar deductible currently is two thousand five eighty two seventy six. And that amount is now going to two thousand nine thirty seven oh three. Our option three, which is our two thousand dollar deductible, currently for a single, it's nine thirty five eighty two. The new proposed rate is one thousand sixty four eighteen, with eighteen cents I should say. And then for family, the current rate is two thousand three thirty nine fifty six. And the new proposed rate is two thousand six hundred sixty dollars and forty five cents. So that's that part of it, now the splits, I don't know if you want to go into that Natalie, do you have the information?
Sure, um well, I'm just looking at what Lee has on the screen, I have some other things.
Okay, that is, yeah, yeah.
Yes. So um as um. As the policy indicates, we could do um five percent of the employees on this. Um based on um some of your indications and discussions, you want to cover more than that five percent requirement for employees. Because it's a thirteen point seven percent increase, so um working with Ray, we went through. And it's about nine point nine percent that you would be covering then of the thirteen point seven percent increase. So trying to still keep rates um. From being too high for employees, so these would be um the new rates for the single and the family plan. Based on those three options that Brenda reviewed, on the H S A option, um just to note, if employees. Elect the single plan, as you see on that sheet, then two thirty nine sixty would go into their H S A.
And there would be no cost to them.
And no cost to them, yeah.
How much should we break each splits?
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by McElany.
I would note too, the manager fee, as far as we know, is still three dollars, so unless that, yeah, for the H S A account, so I just have that as part of this as well to.
You're continuing to cover that portion of the employees. Correct.
Yes, per individual who is enrolled.
Oh, sure, just, just to emphasize the point that that Natalie was making, so we we agreed, you know, with mostly through the union. The ratio context is what usually generates a lot of the, a lot of the policy on some of this stuff. Um is to cover, you know, increase by five percent, the amount that we cover every year, this time we're doing it more because, because of that thirteen point seven percent increase. I mean, it's just the the challenge of healthcare in this day and age, so just so people understand what's what's going on here.
Right, so you've increased your amount that you are covering on the employees from five to nine point nine.
From my point of view, that's the exception, we don't, we can't, hopefully we're not gonna have to do that.
Yeah.
All the time, but um understanding that, you know, this would be for that thousand dollar deductible plan, that even more than the ninety nine. Um had we just stuck to our five percent, so.
Right, considerably more.
Any other questions on this? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Yes, thank you. The number fourteen. Action to approve auditors account with treasure and note monthly registered deeds fee.
Okay, so you have that information in your packet as well. Uh you have all the totals of everything that was on hand in the treasurer's office on. Um the last day of September. And then also I would just note that of those um. Of the twenty five million seven forty one seven oh three twenty eight, these are the amounts that went to our custodial funds, which is the schools. They will receive four hundred sixty two thousand eight hundred sixty eighty seven. The townships will receive sixty four thousand six forty six forty eight and the cities and towns will receive ninety thousand six seventy nine fifty six. And then the registered deeds fees for the month of September is thirty eight thousand nine thirty five twenty five. And then the registered deeds fees for the month of September is thirty-eight thousand nine thirty-five twenty-five.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Gable, second by Johnson. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
No, nothing for fifteen.
Uh, number sixteen, action to approve claims for payment. There's a stack.
Yeah, so you have the, the one. We have also jail, which I'll keep separate just to um, keep track of that a little easier. Um, I didn't really see anything that jumped out other than like um, some costs related to the vehicles. So the total amount of claims for the month is one million three seventy-five eight hundred twelve point nine one ninety-one cents. But the state passed the room out is six hundred thirty-six thousand eight hundred fifteen dollars and sixty-one cents. So the actual uh, claims to the county for county business is seven hundred thirty-eight thousand nine hundred ninety-seven and thirty cents.
Motion to approve.
Motion by McLeaney, second by Gable. Any other question or comment?
See anything in there?
See anything?
So uh, when the part of the attorney after doing all that, whether we.
Well.
On my throat?
Yeah, pretty much. We're getting right down there. Um, so once we get this all taken out, it's catastrophic. Um, that's Commissioner contingency. Uh, so yeah, this month after the ninety thousand six fourteen ninety-five, the budget remaining is twenty-seven thousand twenty-three thirteen. Um, we'll probably have to start using Commissioner contingency. I will reach out to Rod Forten though to see if that's something we have to do right away or if we can just wait, you know, and track it till the end of the year rather than continuously having to do budget supplements. I will get that um, information from him. We're, um, we received a, a check for like, believe around five thousand. I would have to go through that total stack of bills because the only thing that we are eligible to put back in is that it's been paid this year. So anything prior years cannot be supplemented in.
Another court meeting on the twenty-seventh. Isn't there another counting claim?
Yes.
I think there is, I think it's.
Yes.
So, so that another.
Yeah, a kind of weight. And then we'll have to go through all those and just separate it out, but it's a little process to.
So that, that offsets a little bit, but at the same time, you know, it's a very, we budgeted what eight hundred thousand something, some.
Yeah.
We budget a lot for this because it's a very unpayable.
I hate working on that simply because uh, oh, somebody will hear and feel sorry for us, but that's not, they don't have.
Yeah, this year's.
Think you may have got to be, that's how you gotta do that.
This year's budget was eight hundred and fifty.
So I guess to, I'm, I'm guessing we might have to pull it out, you know, I guess you'll ask Rod, but um, since that budget, if we end up cleaning out that entire budget, you know, might be, yeah.
The Commissioner contingency, then we would have to do formal budget hearings to pull it from general for anything at the end of the year if we need to, so. That I would have to advertise and all that.
So we have a motion in a second. These.
Yes, yes, for the claims, yes.
Okay, thanks Brenda. Um, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, seventeen, action to approve automatic budget, so.
Oh, I had that one more, I'm sorry. Um, we don't have that, but I also have the claims for the jail project. There was three of them this month, um, Architect Inc. in the amount of one thirty-four uh, three seventy-three. And then we have two for Tegra, one for the September services, and then they also submitted the October. So the September services was twenty-one thousand eighty-five dollars and sixty cents. And then uh, the October one is twenty thousand six hundred and eighty-eight for a total of one hundred seventy-six thousand one forty-six sixty. Currently, we have two million eighty-one forty-three forty-six left in that account. Um, minus the one seventy-six one and forty-six sixty, we will have one million nine hundred four thousand eight hundred ninety-six eighty-six. That's what's left in them.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by McLeaney. Any other questions?
Just a quick, quick question for the auditor. Um, so the, the, the amount that's left, that's, that's what we budgeted for twenty twenty-five or what we expected, what we expected to spend for twenty twenty.
That's the amount we moved from the building fund into there. That's what's left of that fund. Yes.
Okay.
Seeing no further question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Nothing for seventeen or eighteen, but we do have one travel request. Do you want to announce that? I don't want to jump, I want to take your.
No, oh, um, yeah, number nineteen, we need a action to approve travel requests.
Right, and that is for the Director of Equalization Office to attend a meeting and you have all that information in your packet of where and when and.
Motion by Johnson. Second by Gable. Any further question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I did forget to mention, we have uh, Tyler's on Zoom and Commissioner Van Dusen is, is uh, is gone today. So. Number twenty, uh, public notice, is there uh, anything coming up that?
We have the Watertown, tonight is the Watertown Development Company Annual Meeting, Second Street Station at five P M.
Any other? Okay, we'll move down to item twenty-one. Is there any old business?
Good, Mr. Chair, just to give a update on the jail. Um, so they, they started pouring some footings yesterday. Um, let's see if I can find that timeline. Show it to people, like, uh, to give an idea of what, what, what is done for the um, the projectile, what, what's going to be happening in the project. And this is something that um, Commissioners now have access to on that, that Procore site, which is kind of the, the portal for the construction project, so. But you can see, this is kind of a complicated looking chart, but the, the jail is divided into three, three areas, area A, area B, and area C. So kind of follow up north, kind of north to south to east a little bit. And so area A is that main cell block. Um, they haven't started a whole lot of work on that yet. Um, uh, but area B is where most of the work is right now. So that's kind of the part between the main cell block has some juvenile uh, female housing booking area. Uh, and processing of inmates basically. And then area C is what's going to be the sheriff's office, but so area B is where they started pouring footings yesterday. Um, so they've been working on the forms over the past week. So uh, and, and getting the soil right around those footings, you know, planning that out, you know, based upon how much clay is in the soil, what the expandability is and, you know, um, and worried about, you know, to prevent frost heaps and stuff in the future. So that's, that's kind of what's going on right now, so. Kinda insignificant and um, they're hoping eventually to get, and once things get set up and, and rolling a bit more regularly, getting a, a webcam out there for, for people to take a look at if they're curious about the jail construction, which maybe if you're not a county commissioner, you're not that curious about it, but anyway, so. But that's, that's kind of what's going on right now. And then there is another, we have another meeting this week about, with the owner, um, architect contractor. So I ta, I try, try to attend those, but if one of the commissioners wants to attend one, just let me know.
What are you having with that?
They're, they're by teams. They're on teams. It's on, on video, it's a video meeting, so. You can go out to the site, I guess, and sit there if you want to, but uh, that, that's, that's almost, that, that's almost set up with some of the temporary uh, power connections. I, I don't know, it might be by now. So last time I was out there. So they were still working on that, but.
Yeah, the one time that, uh, I, I walk there pretty much every day and uh, uh, I'm just starting to wonder about the traffic flow on two twelve. What, you, could you bring me up to date? Are they gonna have uh, auction lights or?
They, it is, yeah, but so, yeah, good. Yeah, yeah. So basically the um, the, the plant, they did use some signage when they had a lot of trucks moving in and out, but um, yeah, right now it seems to be okay when, when there's not, when you don't have the big machinery moving in and out, then it seems to be okay. But if, but obviously you have to be very careful and, and then uh, things like, you know, which direction the trucks turn out of that. If they, if you have a large truck coming out, do they try to cross all the way across the median? Or do they take a right and then, then get turned around later on, you know, those kinds of things, so. Um, but that, that's a good question. So right now, what they've been doing is putting up a sign if they need to, you know, to let trucks entering, entering and exiting.
I guess it's for my own selfish reason because I'm really proud of myself that I got through this destruction of the hundred mill without running into somebody because I'm terrible. I kind of watch what's going on, you know, and when my wife says I'm gonna kill somebody, believe me, because I, I'm either farming or watching some construction project and and it becomes a death machine, you know, and it's, it's fun to watch, but there's a, I noticed doing all of two twelve, there's a lot of traffic that will slow down, you know, very, just.
Oh, and they're, yeah, because they're just curious about the construction.
You know, looking at the project and, and uh, don't want to be responsible for any accidents.
Well, that would be, we should pay attention to our drivers.
Yeah.
That's my recommendation.
Okay, thanks uh, Commissioner Gable on that update. Uh, is there any new business? Okay, now is the number twenty-three, item twenty-three is time for the open. If there's any public comments? Um, if there's no public comments, is there any Commissioner comments?
Mr. Chair, I did attend the birthday party for the U S Navy last night. Uh, twenty-five years, and I tell you what, we won the war again. So uh, life is good. So uh, it was a lot of fun. I don't know what there were, thirty, fifty of us there. But uh, we all had a story. Everybody had a story even now. And it's uh, I told my wife, I said, I know you're very bored, but it was really kind of fun for me, you know, kind of reminiscing with some of these old salts in the home. It, it was good. Need to do that more often. Maybe that's.
Any other uh, Commissioner comments?
Yeah, tough though.
Okay. Is there a, I haven't heard, is there, we have a, okay, we have a need for executive session?
Yes, contract.
Contracts and negotiations, so number three. So we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
I'll say that.
Motion by Gable, second by Johnson to go into executive session.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move into executive session.
So.
It's just, you just end the meeting, just end the meeting.
For. Me.
We don't have to go back.
You got, you got Tyler.
Oh, okay, sorry. Sorry, Todd.